Good afternoon. I'd like to call this Monday, August 4th, 2025 Board of Pender County Commission to Order. If you would please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all your great blessings. God, we thank you for our great nation, our great state, our great county. God, we ask you to go with us in this meeting. Remind us once again it's not about us, but it's about the people. In Christ Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you are a first responder or a veteran, please remain standing for a moment so we can recognize you for your service. I just want to remind my fellow commissioners tonight that some citizens has reached out. Just make sure that anyone speaking has got your green light on so everybody can hear us on the microphones. Yeah, okay. How many do we have tonight? Mr. Thurman?
There are more than one page left.
Okay. Make sure your green light's on there, Trey, when you're talking.
Twenty-one, Mr. Chairman.
What's the consensus? Y'all want to let them have three minutes? That's fine. I'm here for the folks, so they can have three minutes. It's fine with me. That's fine with me. All right. Everybody had time to review the agenda, the item for for tonight? If so, entertain the motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion's on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented tonight, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public hearing, item six point one, recognition of Mr. James Williams, presentation, the Order of the Longleaf Pine. Mr. Terry and Mr. Cologne, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chairman of the Board. My name is Anthony Cologne.
And I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director of Public Utilities for Pender County. It is with great pride that I speak before you today regarding one of the most prestigious honor in the state, the Order of the Longleaf Pine. This distinguished award is one of the highest recognitions granted by the Governor of North Carolina. It is reserved for individuals who have demonstrated extraordinary service on wavering dedication and outstanding leadership in the community and across the state. Recipients of this award are not celebrated for their contribu-- and not only celebrated for their contribution, but they are also named honorary citizens of North Carolina, joining an esteemed fellowship of respected leaders whose impact will be remembered for generations. It is a lasting symbol of gratitude, respect, and a legacy of servency. Tonight, we have the unique privilege of recognizing one of our own, a dedicated public servant, a longtime resident of Pender County, and a recent retired member of Pender County Utilities who is here with us this evening. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Brian Terry, who happens to be the supervisor at the time for this individual, to the podium to present the award.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. Brian Terry, Chief Operating Officer for Utilities. So today, we are proud to present the Order of the Longleaf Pine, one of North Carolina's most highest honors to Mr. James Williams.
Good morning.
Throughout his career, he led with integrity, professionalism, and mentored others with unwavering dedication, all without seeking any type of recognition. Though now he's retired, like Mr. Cologne stated, Mr. Williams' influence remains evident across our organization. across our organization and across the community in Pender County. So on behalf of the state of North Carolina and with board support tonight, it is my privilege to present the Order of the Longleaf Pine to Mr. James Williams. And with the board's support, I would like to get him to say something if he would like.
Absolutely. Welcome, Mr. Williams. What a high honor.
I can speak behind a truck, but in this capacity, I am too overwhelmed and appreciative. And Mr. Groves, I know you probably had something to do with this, but I thank you guys for this honor. It's highly appreciated, but it wasn't necessary. The job was more than enough. And I just took pride in doing what I did best, serving the public. And that's what Utilities was all about. And you know, the biggest rule for me wasn't the ten rules. It was just that one, treat others as you would want to be treated. And that's what I strive to do. And man, you guys honor me. I really appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, ladies.
Come on up.
Ah, that's good.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Three and two kilometers. Yes, sir.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Should've had this last. That's tough to follow. Didn't want to make you wait that long, Mr. Williams. All right. Item 6.2, future, Pender County's Future Leaders Intern, Summer Internship Program Experience. Ms. Wicklin Bennett, welcome. And to our interns, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here today because it is our interns' last week of employment here with Pender County. They started at the beginning of the summer, and it's been a really great experience for them and every employee who has had the opportunity to work with them. They did everything from learning about the history of Pender County to visit departments and see firsthand, have, get firsthand experience of what our employees do for the public. And it was just a really good program to really introduce them to jobs and employment and careers in local government. I'm gonna pass it over to them, and they have something to share with you guys.
Good afternoon, Chairman and fellow Commissioners. My name's Elizabeth Brinson. I'm one of the county interns. We wanted to speak a little bit today about our participation in the Pender County Future Leaders Internship Program this summer. First of all, thank you. This has been an amazing opportunity, and we've all learned so much throughout this process. Each of us has prepared a story or little anecdote about our favorite moment in this internship and what it has taught each of us about what it really means to serve in local government and to be a leader. After we share our stories, we'll talk more about our community service project, Pender Tot and Take, which was successfully held at the H.R. Building on Thursday.
My name is Callia Cruz, and my favorite thing I've seen while working here is the genuine enjoyment people get from their jobs. During the first week of the internship, we spent time with finance, specifically Jacob, who had a clear passion and love for his job. I think that is a perfect example because some, because having someone show their enjoyment helped enrich my understanding and appreciation of the job. There have been many other examples of people showing kindness and understanding, such as the social services team, who often see people going through incredibly hard times and still allow their compassion and empathy to shine through. The emergency management team and the fire marshals have been beyond welcoming to us and everyone they see throughout the day. It is employees like this that exemplify my favorite parts of the county, and they have taught me a lot, especially those who are passionate about what they do and why they do it.
Hello. My name is Ruby Waters, and I'm a senior at Topsail High School. One of my favorite things about my time with this internship was getting to explore the history of Pender County. As a member of the yearbook staff at my high school, this past year, we dived into the past of Pender County as we built our centennial edition. As I worked with the county, got to explore our local history museum and library annex, as well as hear countless stories from community members and county employees, I was able to add even more depth to my own historical knowledge of Pender County. I believe that getting to know our past is important in how we influence our future.
So my favorite moment took place at the Tot and Take on Thursday. A woman and her daughter had introduced themselves to us towards the end of the event. The mom shared with us that their family had experienced a tragedy that very Monday and that her entire home had burnt down due to a lightning strike. She expressed her gratitude for the project as she filled her bag with clothes that had been graciously donated from all the people in the community. She gave us really powerful words of encouragement and told her story. After showing us pictures of the remains of her home, she enthusiastically told us that by October, she would contact us to donate clothes. She said that if we gave her only a few months, she would be back on her feet and ready to donate. Despite the fact this project was simply a summer event for our internship, I think her spirit perfectly encapsulates Pender County. Even in the midst of tragedy, she was eager to give back to her community. Seeing the resilience and passion of not just her and her daughter, but of all the people we've met throughout this internship, has shown me that passion is what makes a community and is exactly what fuels Pender County.
I would like to speak a little more on the Pender Tot and Take and thank everyone who made that event possible for us, including those who donated and who came to the event. The project allowed us to use our leadership skills that we've learned throughout the internship to make a difference in the community.
On Thursday, we worked together with the H.R. Team to display all our items inside the building, and people from all over the county and even outside of the county came to participate in our free thrift event. It was packed, and we were super excited the community showed up.
We got to meet a lot of amazing people from all over who had heard about the project, and it meant a lot to be able to see our hard work organizing pay off at the event. Ultimately, both the internship and the community service project specifically taught us so much about leadership, passion, and hard work. And we're super grateful to everybody who welcomed us into the county with open arms. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you so much, ladies. Thank you. I want to thank them for participating in this program. One thing that we're passionate about is the young men and women in our community and the service that our employees give the county is what we look for. We want folks to establish roots here in Pender County and have a career and not just a job. And their young leadership is proof positive that that makes a difference, and we want to appreciate them for doing that. All right. Onto public comment. Mr. Thurman, you said there's twenty-one?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman.
All right.
Do you wish to read the preamble?
Yeah, I'm gonna, for the audience, I'm gonna read you some pre-written words here for the speakers. I think there's twenty-one of you. You'll have three minutes, so. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board chairperson in which the names appear on the sheet, and speakers shall address the board from the podium and begin their comments by stating their name and their address. Speakers shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks and shall refrain from personal attacks and the use of profanity and the discussion of any personnel matters or any matters deemed confidential by law. And you each have three minutes, and you'll hear a little beep at the end of three minutes letting you know that your time is up. All right, and with that.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. Rochelle Whiteside?
Ms. Whiteside is welcome.
My name's Rochelle Whiteside. I live at 315 West Bridger Street in Burgau. I'm delighted to hear Mr. Burton say publicly that he hopes citizens will attend town hall public meetings and workshops about the very important issue of the noise ordinance. This is exactly what the public needs, and the public awaits what we hope will be the first of many town hall public meetings where all commissioners and supporting staff are present and where citizens can ask questions and get answers in order to shine a light on the reasons behind decisions which our representatives make on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Karen Malloy?
Ms. Malloy, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Karen Malloy. I reside at 513 North Wright Street in Burgau. I am here, too, to ask that Commissioners continue to honor their commitment to hold public town meetings, so that citizens can come and ask the questions that need to be asked. This is all we ask. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Amy Jones?
Ms. Jones, welcome.
My name is Amy Jones, and I live at 2460 N.C. Highway 53 West. I'm here encouraging each one of you to hold town hall meetings where each one of you will be present. I understand that this is one more thing added to your plate, but I believe it would foster a sense of community and give Pender County citizens as a whole a chance to ask questions and engage in healthy discussions pertaining to decisions being made that will impact the citizens in the county. Having town hall meetings at a reasonable time where those working can attend would be encouraging as well, and I think that would make us feel heard and valued. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Charlie Schoonmaker?
My name is Charlie Schoonmaker, and I reside at 725 Camp Kirkwood Road in Wathah, North Carolina. I'm here to ask you, the Commissioners, to sign the approved contract between Union Rescue Squad and the Pender County Commissioners and to supply adequate funds so that we might return immediately to serving our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Martha Daniel?
Ms. Daniel, welcome.
Good afternoon, Martha Daniel, 308 Cowan Street, Burgau. I know you, everyone up there, and everybody back here as well. Love Pender County, or we would not be here. And I'm looking forward to the town hall meeting so that we can get to know each other better, non-adversarial, and get some things done that we would all like to see done together. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Amy Schule?
Ms. Schule, welcome.
Standing room only today. My name's Amy Schule. I live at 1606 Pender Lee Highway in Burgau, and today I respectfully ask that you honor your commitment to hold a town hall meeting regarding the noise ordinance. These discussions are vital to ensuring transparency and giving citizens a voice in decisions that affect our community. I also encourage you to continue hosting similar meetings on other important issues impacting Pender County, for example, the fire and E.M. S. merger, prior to moving ahead with hiring consultants and committing county funds. I would ask that these be conducted as true town hall discussions with Commissioners and key staff present, so residents can engage in meaningful dialogue and have their concerns addressed directly. Thank you so much for your time and for your dedication in serving our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Schoonmaker, welcome.
My name is Betty Schoonmaker. I live on Camp Kirkwood Road in Wathah, North Carolina. I'm a former retired E.M.T. and a former member of Union Rescue. I'm asking that you please sign the contract to return Union Rescue to service with adequate Our community thanks you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tom Brown?
My name is Tom Brown. I live at 1881 Henry Brown Road, Burgau. I'm requesting that you honor what you've said about holding public meetings. These are greatly needed in our area because as a citizen of this county, I feel like we have been left out, and some of the decisions that has been made by this board are against our best interests. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Don Hobel? Cindy Moore?
Ms. Moore, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all for such a great board here at Pender County. I applaud each of you. I'm Cindy Moore, 877 Webtown Road, Maple Hill, North Carolina. I stand before you today asking that you help us to help you so that our county will be a great county, asking that we have more public meetings. And to you, the board, and the individual workers and staff of Pender County, I say to you, let your light shine bright before men, that we and they may see your good works. Thank you for such a great job.
Thank you.
Sherri Proctor?
Hello, I'm Sherri Proctor. I live at 3268 Pender Lee Highway, and I'm here to ask you, as others have asked, for increased transparency with the work of the board and ask you to be committed to that process of informing citizens of what's going on and also to conduct yourselves in an ethical manner as board commissioners following the statutes of North Carolina in your work and making sure to protect our liability as a county against unethical and illegal procedures. For example, making sure that your procedures of considering the public's input and also when to conduct in open session and in closed session. There are specific reasons that the state allows closed sessions to occur, and we hope that you are following those reasons and that you are also reporting the results and the goings-on of those meetings that are in closed session. Even though the details may not be divulged, we as citizens would like to know what's happening and be informed of the decisions that are being made. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Smith, welcome.
Well, say good evening to the board and to all of you that's here under the sound of my voice. You know, it's not, it's dangerous to give a preacher a mic. My name is Reverend Dr. William L. Smith, and I live on Highway 117, 1520. I'm here also to support you about your public meetings, but that's not my main issue. The main issue is I'm here to support the Willard community about water. Water has been on the back burner for so long, and we want to stir that back up again. So I have some of the elderly ladies here that's a member of my church that I pastor. I pastor New Kirk's Chapel Missionary Baptist Church. And not only do I pastor the church, but I'm there to help develop the community. Pastoring the church goes farther than just being in the church on Sundays and Wednesday night for Bible study. We have to help our people and help them be developed in what they need in economical needs. So we have some of the senior ladies here. They cannot afford to pay a $10,000 of debt for a well, so we're asking that we put this back on the agenda and try to come and help us be successful in getting water in the Willard community in District 4. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Joan Olsen?
Ms. Olsen, welcome.
My name is Jonah Olsen, and I live at 7147 Stag Park Road, Burgau. I am excited about your town hall meetings. I'm excited about the idea of being able to talk to Pender County Commissioners about issues that we have and hopefully to get some answers. I'm concerned about the tax assessments and how those assessments are made specifically. I personally have experienced some pretty serious issues with the Pender County Tax Office. I've visited numerous times, and I feel like we're at the point where we need to go beyond that and actually look at the policy of assessment and taxation in Pender County. So I'm very excited about your town hall meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gina Morosco.
Ms. Morosco, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for all that you do. Thank you for letting me be here today. My name is Gina Humphrey Morosco. I live at 6265 North Carolina Highway 53 West, Burgau, North Carolina. I'm a fourth-generation farmer on our family land and a small business owner. So I come to you from that perspective, as well as a community citizen and a native of Burgau, North Carolina. I am also delighted to hear your comments, Mr. Burton, that you were going to hold the public town meetings regarding the noise ordinance. Very excited to hear about that. And I'm asking the Commissioner Board as a whole to honor your commitment to hold further future town meetings to discuss topics that are concerning our community as a whole. We, as citizens, would like to interact with you, listen to what you're doing. We respect your position greatly. It's a very large responsibility that you all hold, and we know that. And as a citizen, I would love to have an opportunity to hear what you're doing and to have input myself, as well as ask questions, so that I can better understand what is happening, so that I can have a more informed opinion about what is happening, and just more information as a whole. Because when a person has all the information that they need, they can form a more intelligent opinion of the matter, instead of an emotional opinion. And I do believe that, as a community, we need to be more grounded in our information so that emotion can line up with the intelligence that is within us. So I just wanted to mention that to you, and also to pose this to you. Just imagine what we can accomplish when we are operating in unity with one another for the common goal of our community, for the best of our community. Thank you for letting me speak. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Kay Warner.
Ms. Warner, welcome.
Good afternoon. I, too, am here to speak about the commitment to hold a public town meeting about the noise ordinance. That is certainly a step in the right direction. That should be the beginning, with these meetings being held on other important issues, some already approved, such as the fire and EMS, without any questions being taken or answers given to the public. We need real town hall meetings with the Commissioners present and supporting staff in attendance, and proper notification given to the public, that these meetings will be held with a date, time, and location. Thank you for your consideration, and we hope that we will proceed to see some improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. What was your address, ma'am?
115 Horseshoe Lane. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Burgau.
Frankie Saunders.
Ms. Saunders, welcome.
Hey, my name is Frankie Saunders. I live at 90 Murrity Town Road. Yes, I'm with the rest of them. I do want to thank you guys. You do have a hard job. But the Pender County people would like to have a little bit more input and let you know how they feel. There's a lot of things that weren't addressed on and didn't have any say-so on. So to get down to it, there's some things I want to clarify, to clarify transparency here. Because I understand that I heard, I understand that there was a pushed Commissioners vote last Monday night after the August 28th, 25th meeting, to use taxpayers' money to hire outside legal counsel, not to defend the county, but to explore whether the county's insurance should cover a lawsuit filed against the three Commissioners personally. This move was made with little to none public transparency, and raises serious concerns about misuse of public funds and a lack of accountability. You guys are better than that. You're above that, and we don't know where you fell off at with that move. And because we, because we're not asked if we wanted the cost of a $40 paper to go to a $143 paper. Nobody was asked that. This goes along with the fact that you Commissioners made this decision about the Pender tops a post and voiced without the public's input, yet pushing higher paper costs down our throats. And now, to add insult to injury, you're wanting the public's or taxpayers' money to defend you out of this irresponsible mess and commissions that you guys created carelessly. Also, a different topic, and an extremely lot of people in Pender County are still and very concerned about this so-called merger of Pender EMS and Fire. We, you know, your constituents are very scared that some deadly prices are going to be paid before you guys actually hear us, the Pender County taxpayers, before you hear us. Your constituents were happy with the way it was. Both of these, the beefs that I'm raising about, I call them beef items, that I am talking about, are going to raise our taxes, one way or the other, in appraisals, one way or the other, it's going to raise it. We're very concerned. We do realize you guys have a hard job. But I think it would be a lot less stressful if you got more of our input. So I was glad to hear you, Randy, to talk about having more meetings, open meetings, for people to hear people's input and how they feel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Louis Saunders. Michelle Perre.
Ms. Perre, welcome.
Hello. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm Michelle Perre. I live at 108 North McCray Street in Burgau. And I just want to say that because I live in Burgau doesn't mean that I don't pay attention to what goes on in the county, too, and that it doesn't affect me and my family. I'm glad to hear that town hall meetings are going to be conducted about the noise ordinance, and I'd love to hear the same thing for all the other crucial items that are coming before our community right now. Love to encourage you to get the word out about those in a way that we can access easily and in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Shar McLean.
Ms. McLean, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Shar McLean. I reside at 305 South McCray Street here in Burgau. I stand in solidarity with the rest of our residents who are requesting transparency in town hall. I'm here because of the ongoing update to the South Carolina, I'm sorry, the southeastern North Carolina Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was passed by your predecessors in 2021. This document, which is intended to safeguard our families' homes and businesses from disasters, has major problems that demand immediate attention. After carefully reviewing the current plan, I found serious errors and omissions, especially a lack of strategy specific to the unique risks in Pender County and the town of Burgau. Unfortunately, these issues are not limited to our county. They're also being reported in Onslow, Brunswick, and New Hanover. What is even more concerning is the lack of real community engagement. The consulting firm ESP Associates, leading this process, has scheduled only one virtual meeting for residents of all four counties. For many of our citizens, especially in districts without reliable internet, as Commissioner Tate pointed out last month, this simply is not accessible, and it's not sufficient. Neither the town of Burgau's planning director nor local officials were contacted directly, and in the absence of a county manager, assistant manager, planning director, or stable emergency management, there is a serious leadership gap. That is why, after reaching out to Burgau leadership, I'm bringing these urgent concerns to you, and recommendations as well. Our property taxes should afford us not just services, but the security that comes with well-vetted local disaster planning. I urge the Board not to approve this plan revision until it is put up for meaningful review in a town hall or other means, and get local comment. We need in-person opportunities for community input across our county, and not just one single online meeting. I have, am happy to share with you all the documentation outlining these problems that I've shared with other leaders in our community, as well as feedback I will be providing to other counties' planning directors and municipal leaders. I hope you will consider them carefully. I brought just one copy, if you are interested in reviewing that. I hope you will consider them and act to ensure that, when disaster strikes, that our plan protects our citizens and our property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Donald R. Huffham.
Mr. Huffham, welcome.
I couldn't really hear it back there very well. I don't know if you can crank the volume up a little bit. My name's Donald Huffham, 1089 Ponty Woods Road. Thank you for allowing us to be here this afternoon. I hope you will continue to honor our commitment to hold these town hall meetings that are and about the noise ordinance. Please continue to hold these meetings about our imported issues and allowing citizens to voice their opinions and ask questions or receive answers, and please make them real town hall meetings with all Commissioners supporting the staff present. Thank you.
Those are all the sign-ups, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
We did have some written statements that were submitted, but normally, we don't read those. It's entirely up to the Board how you want to proceed. I think they were emailed to the Board members as well.
You have copies as well.
I'm good with it. If any Board member wants to read those statements aloud for the public, that's fine with me, too.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before we do that, can I ask for your kind consideration as Chairman, and ask that we suspend the rules at this point for our meeting and reconsider the issue of the noise ordinance? Normally, I don't ask that, but I've heard overwhelmingly from folk throughout the county, east to west on this, and I do believe that, I'm just asking if we could resuspend that. I'd like to revisit that issue tonight.
Are you putting that in a motion?
That's my motion, Mr. Chairman. I'll ask to, we've heard from the people overwhelmingly in the county, and I'd like to bring that back up this evening for consideration, reconsideration of vote.
Commissioner Tate's got a motion on the table to waive the rules to bring the noise ordinance back up for discussion and mitigation tonight. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All right. Motion and a second is on the floor to waive the rules. All those in favor, six and five, saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote. All right. We'll put that on...
9.4.
9.4, Madam Manager.
Mr. Chairman. May I also respond to Reverend Smith's comment about the water in the Willoughby district? We have overwhelmingly heard about water, and since joining this Board almost three months ago, three or four months ago, however long it's been, I think that's something that we're trying to look at and really address here on the Board. We inherited a lot of different issues with water, but it's certainly not an excuse. It is a priority, because my district is drying up. We heard that several times, and we also have experienced a lot of water issues. I thank Mr. Cologne for bringing those issues to our attention. He and the manager and I met some Fridays ago on this issue as well. So looking at really addressing that and coming to the meeting with Mr. Cologne at the New Curbs Chapel Church, and really, really talk about all of these issues even more. And then lastly, I think someone mentioned about internet. That is a real issue in our district. If you haven't been in our area, on Highway 11, where I live at, service is horrible. And those of you that has visited, you can tell that it's very horrible. We got to do something about that. Our district is really suffering. And my direction on this Board, I really want us to really address that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Tate. All right, so to get back on track, item eight, the consent agenda, everybody reviewed the consent agenda? And if so, I'll take any direction from the Board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull 8.4 for discussion.
Okay. Item 8.4, we'll go to the approvals under 9.5, right? Or we can put it in the front, if you want to, and do 8.4 before we do 9.1. That's fine. It'll be a little better that way. Okay? Any other? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Some movement, Mr. Chairman.
All right, it's a motion to pass the consent agenda with the exception of item 9.4, I'm sorry.
I'll say it.
All right, a second. All those in favor, six and five, saying aye, raise your hand. Aye, all right. All right, she knows. All right, we'll go to item 8.4. Mr. Cologne, welcome, sir.
Well, good afternoon again, Board members and Chairman of the Board. On item 8.4 is a pro request to carry over every budget, a purchase order for the feasibility study for Rocky Point wastewater, in the amount of 122,679,85. So, a few months ago, the Board approved for Mahkem and Crete to do a feasibility study for sewer in the Rocky Point area. And that was in an amount, and I don't remember exactly all the total, but it was somewhere around 147, I believe. And that project began on the 2025 budget. Now there were a new budget, which what there's left is 122,679,85. We're just asking to go ahead and carry that over to this budget, so we can continue with the feasibility study. The results are expected to be in October, where Mahkem and Crete is going to come over and give us guidance on how to proceed.
Discussion question?
Yeah, my question is, where is the location of the studies? I think you mentioned three.
So there are three sides that we're looking at right now, okay? One of the sides is the Corbett property on Highway 133, and that side is being investigated right now. There's another side, you know where Paul's Place is? Right behind Paul's Place, there's some properties in there, in between Paul's Place and the Falls Smith subdivision. That's a property that we're looking at as well. And then the other side is, we already have a property where the regional pump station is located. There are some warehouses, properties in the back, and we're looking at that one. That one would be like the most remote and almost impossible to get, but we're still going to give it a try. So far, right now, it's looking that the Corbett property on Highway 133 is looking very probably a possibility for a half a million gallon wastewater treatment plant to handle Rocky Point commercial and whatever subdivisions that we have in place right now.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other question?
Any other questions for Mr. Cologne? If not, I'll entertain a motion on 8.4.
I'll make a motion.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second on the table for 8.4. All those in favor, six and five, saying aye, raise your hand. Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. All right, that takes care of that item. So we're on to 9.1. Mr. White. Approval to accept a grant from the USTA for $11,950.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners. So this is the third USTA grant that we've got towards Hampstead Aquinas Park Phase 4. So I'm here tonight to ask for approval to accept this grant and the BOA associated with this in the amount of $11,950. And like I said, this is the third USTA grant that we've received for this project. So this, the total, including this grant, will be $43,490, so. And we're moving along with construction. Hopefully... Hopefully, uh, weather-dependent, we'll finish construction this week, and, uh, I believe Brandy's going to send out a, a grand, grand opening date to the Board very soon, so.
Outstanding.
Yep.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. White on this item?
Mr. White, can you explain for the residents, we have a lot of residents from here tonight, fortunately from other parts of the county. Can you explain to them the selection process as you did with me when I went out to visit the site with you?
Yes, sir. So, uh, for, uh, Hampstead Kiwanis Park Phase Four and any of our park construction projects that we have going on, uh, we have, uh, we had community meetings, uh, community input meetings and surveys. Uh, many of them came, uh, after our 2022, uh, Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Countywide Master Plan. And so at those meetings, the community is able to vote, uh, whether they'd like to see tennis courts or baseball fields or walking trails and things like that. And then we use that information, uh, to put together a, a grant application package that we bring back to the Board and, uh, seek, uh, then we go to, uh, the state or other funding sources to try to get the project moving forward. So, um, that's a quick overview. I can go in more detail if you'd like.
Specifically asking, when would Willard and Wathor and Bur- uh, Willard, Wathor and Atkinson be considered? The Curry community, those communities?
Yes, sir.
They don't really have really much in their quality of recreational life there.
Good, tha- that's correct, Dr. Tate. And, uh, so in our master plan, we've identified several potential, uh, sites for community parks and, uh, what we call neighborhood parks. Um, and we can certainly, i- if it's a pleasure of the Board, I can bring all that information to you at, um, uh, the next meeting or the, the meeting thereafter, if that would work. Um, and we can kind of, kind of get the process started on that with the, with the community input meetings and kind of starting that to see what the community would like.
Please.
Yes, sir.
It's very important.
Yes, sir. We will, we will do that, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. White? With that? What's the wishes of the Board?
Making motion to approve and accept the grant from USTA in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
And motion is on the table and seconded. All those in favor, six and five, saying aye, raise your hand. Aye? Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
All right, nine point two, Mr. Terry. Allocation of twenty-eight thousand dollars from supplies and materials line for sole source.
Yes, sir. Good evening, uh, Commissioners and Mr. Chair. Brian Terry, Chief Operating Officer with Pender County Utilities, again. Uh, tonight, seeking the, uh, approval for twenty-eight thousand dollars for IDEX Corporation. Uh, IDEX is part of our mandate, which is through the EPA and state for bacteriological testing. Uh, we are required through the state and through the EPA to test bacteriological samples throughout the water system and also at the plant. Uh, so this is a yearly operational cost, uh, that we incur every year and have to bring before the Board, and that's what we're seeking tonight's approval for.
Any further questions for Mr. Terry on that item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, six and five, saying aye, and raise your hand. Aye. Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item, nine point three. Approval of contract with Union Rescue for seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Provide EMS services for the Union District. Ms. Fulton, welcome.
Good evening. So Union Rescue has been a subcontractor of Pender EMS and Fire for many, many years. Um, and it got to a point that they could not agree on, on their contract terms. And so, uh, the Board chose in April to, uh, approve a contract with Union Rescue as a, a direct contractor of the county. Pending that, the contract could be agreed upon, uh, meet the state, county medical director requirements. So Union Rescue, county staff, Pender EMS and Fire, and the North Carolina Office of OEMS, um, have had multiple meetings to reach a contract that would satisfy all of the parties, maintain the level of service currently provided by the countywide EMS system plan, and that worked for everybody. So this contract will change Union Rescue from a basic service provider to an advanced level provider. And the reason that is, is because Pender EMS and Fire has been providing the paramedic that rides on Union's truck. So Union is considered a basic level provider, even though there was paramedic level coverage on their trucks. So each ambulance will be staffed with at least one advanced EMT and one basic EMT, which is the same level of service provided by Pender EMS and Fire on their ambulances in other districts of the county. A paramedic will be provided by Pender EMS and Fire, um, on a quick response vehicle known as a QRV that is stationed at Penderly Fire Department. This, again, mirrors all the other districts in the county with QRVs with paramedics stationed throughout the county. Training will be done in coordination with the medical director and the countywide EMS system plan, so we can have multiple providers, but we can only have one EMS system plan with one medical director and one set of medical protocols. Union Rescue will utilize their volunteers as they are able, and then also part-time staff to ensure that they have adequate coverage at all times. So the cost of the contract for the first year is seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. This includes their operational costs and also capital costs, uh, for remounting one of the ambulances. Um, so tonight, we're looking for approval of the contract and related budget amendment for Union Rescue Squad, so they can provide EMS services in the Union District and throughout the county for mutual aid.
Questions for Ms. Fulton?
I have one question. Question was brought to me, is this amount going to be deducted from Pender Fire and EMS's budget?
So not initially, no. So, uh, Union Rescue, because they have to get approval from the state, they can go ahead. If you sign the contract, they can go ahead and provide basic level service. But they do have to get approved by the state to provide that advanced level service. So they have ninety days in this contract to be able to reach that, uh, staffing level without being held, uh, in violation of the contract. So during that time period, Pender EMS and Fire is having to provide a full ambulance to ensure that there's coverage. Let's say, a month from now, Union Rescue's been doing great, they have their coverage, but there's one day, as they're trying to hire staff, that they cannot provide coverage. And they have that first ninety days to be able to do that. So Pender EMS and Fire is actually having to provide a little bit more than they usually do for this first ninety days. Uh, Ms. Blue and I did meet with Pender EMS and Fire to talk about the different costs for the different levels of service. So what they would have done had all the things stayed the same with Union, what they would do if they had to provide ambulance full-time, and then what the eventual plan is, which is Union Rescue providing the ambulance and Pender EMS and Fire providing the QRV. So initially, there's a lot of upfront costs with paying some overtime and such. Over, you know, later on, it should reduce, uh, the amount of staffing that they're having to pay for.
So I guess the answer is no.
The, correct. Right now, the answer is no. This amount will not be deducted from Pender EMS and Fire.
But that contract also has a capital outlay for a future new ambulance for the Union, correct?
Uh, a, a remount of one of their existing ambulances, where you take the box and put it on a new, a new truck, yes.
Pretty much a new one, yeah.
It's actually several. I mean, I think it's, both of those units need to be replaced, those mounds.
Yes, they need to do both. Uh, this budget amount only includes the one, and then they would do the next one in the next fiscal year. Yes, sir.
So, and, and also, just for clarification for the public, they're going back to the basic level that they used to be, and within a certain amount of time in the near future, they're going to be at an advanced level.
Yes, they will actually...
So they're really doing their due diligence and trying to step up and even provide a higher level of care for those folks in Penderly Willard area.
There will be, with the addition of the QRV and then, uh, Union staffing their ambulance, there will actually be an additional responding unit in that district, yes.
But they'll be able to start with EMT basic tomorrow morning, correct?
Yes. OEMS did not need to approve that change. Pender EMS and Fire just has to send that email tonight.
Wonderful.
And the medical director's all good, he's on board, and everything's...
Yes, spoke with him earlier, yes.
Outstanding. Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Fulton?
No, we just really need to make sure Union get the full number of dollars that we need in our operators over. I think it's, that number looks large, but this is new for Union, and we got to have the people in order to provide the coverage.
Yeah, most of that probably is going to be salaries for those advanced level.
Yes.
It is. Thank you, Chief Giddens, for answering all my questions earlier today, too. I think it really helped us with a lot of our questions that we had earlier, practically tonight.
There's no further discussion or questions, I'll take, uh, guidance from the Board on a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion to approve it, the item as written and seconded. All those in favor, six and five, saying aye, raise your hand. Aye? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
This is a great night for Union, more than you all realize. A lot of working time going into this.
All right. So our next item is an add-on. Let me get back to my paper here. Add-on the noise ordinance rules waiver, so. Uh, you have the floor, Dr. Tate?
Yeah, I, I'm sure there will be many upset with me on this issue, uh, bringing it back up tonight. You know, uh, when we vote on items, we're not all-knowing. We're not on my nifficent. We have to sometime gather more information after a vote has taken place. Sometimes citizens come forward. However, with this issue, I would have liked to have seen this, uh, the number of people who have contacted me, the number of people who have been here at meetings, came out before the two-plus months that we discussed this issue. There's a real issue there with the racetrack. There's a real issue, uh, between them and, uh, their neighbor that needs to be resolved. Um, I don't know who is, where all of that lies at. But what I do know, the comments that moved me most this week has been, of course, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Farms are exempt. Uh, we know that children can ride on their four-wheelers. We know all of that's true. But I think as government officials, that we must be willing, or public servants, let me say that, we must be willing to revisit when it needs to be revisited. And while I made that motion, I really want us to revisit that tonight, um, item and ask that we delay implementation of this item until there is more clarity among staff and among the Board have more clarity. Uh, I don't think it's fair to penalize the entire county, um, for an issue that happened in one community. And, uh, as one public servant, the people have overwhelmingly spoken on this particular issue in enough, with significant, um, reasoning that moves me to reconsider and ask of your consideration tonight in delaying this item until we, as a Board, have more legal review as well, until we have more citizen engagement and more citizen input. I'm asking that we delay the implementation of this item.
So is your, just to, just to clarify, you're, are you making a motion to delay the implementation of what was voted on in the prior meeting, just that por- portion?
My motion at this time is we delay the entire noise ordinance item and revisit this item at a later date once it has been further examined with our committee review, citizen input, and citizen review on it, and more public engagement on it. I ask that we withdraw the, our action from last week and delay the item. Implementation.
And I just...
Make sure your green light's on, sir.
It is, sir. Um, I want to be sure and understand what the motion would be, because we have an existing noise ordinance. What the Board did at the last meeting was amend that ordinance.
I'm, I'm asking that we delay the amendment that we made at the last meeting.
That's what I was asking.
That, that, right, and I, yes, thank you. I was trying to, trying to get clarity on that, so that, again, because there, I mean, the Sheriff's Department currently enforces the current noise ordinance. If somebody's playing music after eleven, then, you know, tha- that kind of thing.
So my motion is that we withdraw the amendment. We withdraw the amendment and to this further community review of this issue, and then come back, uh, with another consideration. But we withdraw the amendment at this time that was made last time. My motion.
Okay, and a- again, we'll see how that goes with the Board. Another option would be to, to delay the implementation of the amendment, the, make the effective date, uh, you know, December first.
I, I don't want to put a date on it until we are, I think we, it seems that we're rushing it, and I think we needed, I would like to withdraw it.
Yep.
Okay, so that...
And if there's not a consideration to withdraw it, I would say that we delay it.
All right, so that motion's on the table, and we've got clarity for that. So is there a second for that?
A second.
And there's a second. So all those in favor of that, of particular motion involving the noise ordinance, raise your hand and six and five, saying aye. Aye? Opposed? We have one of opposition. Okay. Thank you so much.
And I do think something need to be done, and I think we need to start revisiting it tonight, and what we can do to address the concerns between those neighbors that's going on.
Yeah, I do agree with that.
But please, Sharon, it is... Decimated, it's gone away right now, noise ordinance.
Yeah. Just the amendment portion, correct?
The amendment piece, the amendment piece.
That's correct. All right.
And I'm sure I'll hear from the opposing side, and I still stay at fifty-five fourteen N.C. Highway 11. Thank you.
All right. Item eleven, appointments.
Absolutely, sir. My pleasure.
Madam Clerk? Advisory Board of Health is on eleven point one.
Yes. The Pender County Advisory Board of Health has a public member vacancy. Five applications have been received by the clerk for this position. The term for the public member position began on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and will expire on July first, twenty twenty-eight. The applications have atta- are attached, and a summary of the applications was provided below. Carol Henson resides in Burgall and has been a Pender County resident for fifty years. Henson is currently employed by Novak, New Hanover Regional Medical Center as the coordinator nurse for their operating room. In this role, she manages twenty-seven staff members, the schedule, and the budget. She has served on the PTA Board for Pender High and Burgall Middle School. Danielle New resides in Curry and has been a Pender County resident for forty years. New has a degree in nursing, is employed by Pender County Schools as a teacher. She has served on the juvenile justice program. Norman Davis resides in Curry and has been a resident of Pender County for three years. He is employed by Wilmington Health and works in pharmacy. The former clerk did reach out to him to see what role he played in the pharmacy, since there is a pharmacy position on the advisory board open. However, he did not respond. Davis is currently a member of the North Carolina Freemasons. Melanie Malone resides in Willard and has been a resident of Pender County for fifty years. She is employed by Mount Calvary Center for Leadership Development as an executive assistant. Ms. Malone worked, previously worked for Pender County DSS from nineteen ninety-two until two thousand twenty-four. She has a diploma in accounting and business administration. Samantha Jones resides in Willard and has been a Pender County resident for thirty-five years. She is employed by the Pender County Sheriff's Office as a detention officer. In this role, Jones assists with jail operations, reports, training, background checks, and new hires. Jones has served one term on the Advisory Board of Health. The Advisory Board of Health recommends Samantha Jones for reappointment. And the consideration of applicants.
All right. How many openings are there, ma'am?
I nominate Ms. Jones.
There's a nomination on the floor for Ms. Samantha Jones.
This job gets tougher by the day. Melanie, who's worked with the county many years, uh, I certainly wanted her considered tonight. I know she worked, retired from DSS and bring a lot to the table, and, and yes, she works for me at my center. I think she's, she works for me at my center. I think she does an outstanding, excellent job, as well as Ms. New, who is also a longtime teacher and educator here in the county, is a very advocate of public health, uh, do a really good job. But I don't see no reason to remove Ms. Jones tonight, um, from that. So it's difficult, it may be, to explain this tomorrow morning, I'll make, I'll second that motion.
So there's a motion and a second, and just before the vote, I will say that some of our difficult choices are actually good, because we've got some people that are really, um, dedicated to wanting to serve in, in the county, and, and I, I do, although it's difficult, I do, I do know a lot of folks that are highly qualified for this, so. Uh, with that being said, there's a motion and a second on the floor, and I'll, um, those in favor, six and five, saying aye, raise your hand. Aye? All right. You'll notify Ms. Jones.
She's here. You are notified, you are notified. When we have other openings, can we...
You are notified.
We'll be notified when they have other openings coming available on the Board, right?
Yes.
All right. Eleven point two, the Buidification Committee.
All right. We have, um, appointments to the Buidification Committee. Stephanie Nestor resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for twenty years. She is employed by Cape Fair Child Development Center as the Director overseeing childcare management and organizational development. In the past, she served on the United Way of the Cape Fair Region's Education Board. Brian Angst resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for one year. He is employed by Salesforce as the Technical Architect Engagement Director, overseeing bill terms and working with government customers. Angst has served on the Tempehak Area Basketball Association and the Elks Club. And it's consideration for applicants.
How many openings are on that committee? There's several, aren't there?
I do believe there, I think there are two.
Two positions?
If I'm not mistaken.
How many applicants?
Two.
Yeah? Okay. That sounds good.
Making motion to approve of both applicants for the... Make a motion to approve of both applicants for the Beautification Committee.
Say. Motion's on the table and second it. All those in favor, signify by a say and aye, raise your hand. All right. Thank you so much, eleven, three. Appointment of the voting delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, Madam Manager.
Yes, this is the annual NCAACC meeting that will be held later this month in Greenville, North Carolina. And they request that you all appoint a voting delegate amongst yourselves. And I believe they also request an alternate, if I'm not mistaken. You're all registered for the conference, but they request one voting delegate and an alternate.
When is that conference?
It is the August twenty-third, twenty-second, twenty-third.
And I think Mr. Springer has signed up for that. I nominate him to be.
Okay. So, all right, there's a nomination for Vice Chair Springer for that voting position. Everybody give her that?
Absolutely.
Yep, okay. Vice Chair Springer to handle that? How about an alternate? Want to name an alternate while we're at it, just in case? Dr. Tate?
No. Are you, are you attending?
I'm checking my calendar.
I'm going, but I might be late. I am attending. I mean, if you need that, if you tell me, you're not going to be attending. I can do it. I'd like for you to be an alternate.
Okay, absolutely. Put Dr. Tate down for an alternate.
Okay.
If they have a vote and he's kind of a few minutes late, they'll wait for him. Fashion will be late. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. All right, eleven point four, appointment of the interim clerk to the board, Madam Manager.
Yes, so with our clerk position being vacant as of the meeting in July, we need to appoint an interim clerk. Ms. Tracy Shoulders has graciously volunteered to fill that role in the meantime, and we're happy to have her, thank you. If you all so choose to appoint her.
Do we need a motion and a vote to place her as interim? Okay?
No motion.
Motion's on the table and a second. The in favor signify by aye, aye. Ms. Shoulders, welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, do we need to gavel in the, any of the water sewer districts, Mr. Cologne?
No, sir.
Do we need to gavel in the Board of Health, Ms. Carolyn?
No, but at the next meeting, I do hope.
Introduce the new DSS director for the county.
Okay, very good. All right. All right. All right, Mr. Thurman, any items for?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, but first, I'd like to thank Ms. Jones for being willing to serve on our Board of Health. She has a great deal of hands-on and practical experience with, especially seeing, I noticed her application was with mental health and substance abuse.
Yes, she does.
She's seen an awful lot of that in her prior and current work with the, with the jail. And so just wanted to thank her for being willing to serve and bring that expertise to that board. We have some items for closed session, Mr. Chairman. Item three, attorney-client, including discussion of Coastal Pines Solar versus Pender County. And item four, economic development. Item five, potential acquisition of real property. And item six, personnel.
Okay. Madam Manager?
I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Madam Clerk? Anything? You're good. Commissioner Groves?
Let's see. I have a few things. I wish everybody would hang around when they come. They come and speak, and next thing you know, the, the room is empty. Encourage all of them to stay so that they can hear us talk. And one of them complained about closed session. If you want to know what happened in closed session, just read the paper. It'll be in there. Each week. And where were they when we went four hundred million dollars in debt? Where were all these people then? And where were these people when we paid six million dollars for a swamp to build a school on? And the previous owners were told they couldn't do anything with that property, but yet the county paid six million dollars. There's a lot of half-truths out there. And I quote in our paper one time, the half-truth is a whole lie. And that hadn't changed. So I just encourage the community meetings to keep coming and have more of them. And we needed these people two years ago. Where were they then? But I just want to encourage them to keep coming. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. George?
I just have, just one thing. So tonight is Mr. Adams' last meeting with us as commissioners. And I'd like to just take the opportunity to thank him for what he's done for the county. And he'll be truly missed. I, I rely on him for guidance, and sometimes probably a little too much. But I certainly appreciate what he's done for the county and wish him well in the future.
I did, I'd say that also, yeah.
He's not going too far.
That's right. Godspeed, and I've still got your phone number. Vice Chair Springer? Dr. Tate?
Not absolutely one word.
Not one?
Until closed session.
Okay. All right. I just want to say thank you to the folks that did come out tonight to, to voice, to stand up at Public Comment and share their opinions and thoughts and views with us. That's why we live in the United States of America, in a constitutional republic. We are not a democracy, as some people say. But I thank them for coming and speaking up. Everybody is heard by this board, we, we do hear that. But occasionally, we do have a few difficult decisions that we make. That's why the voters put us in a position to make those tough and difficult decisions sometimes. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for closed session.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by a say and aye, aye. All right, we're in closed session, thank you, everyone.